This time I will reconvene into open session, the meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for September 15th, 2022, beginning at 6:58. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustee may participate in this meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the Administration Building. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by the security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Chapa in leading us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would join me in a moment of silence. We now come to open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net. Board meeting speaker request, no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We have one registered speaker, Mr. Weber.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Welcome, Mr. Weber. This is a routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or debate, and the trustees will not reply to the speaker. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. You will have two minutes to speak, and Mrs. Benjamin will notify you when your time is up.
Since I only have two minutes, first, let me ask that you ask the finance director what effect... First of all, let me start with saying I wanted to discuss the tax rate that's on your agenda. I would like for at least one of you to ask the tax director, the finance director, what a further three cent drop would do to the potential Robin Hood payment for next year? What effect, if anything, that would have? All right. Now, this current past year, Arlington ISD had the highest MNO tax rate in Tarrant County. And even though you're dropping it some, you aren't dropping it enough, because the second highest was Mansfield, and they're dropping theirs more than eight cents. So it looks like Arlington ISD will be the highest MNO tax rate, or tied for the highest MNO tax rate, for three years in a row. Now, before you give me this voter election stuff, when you went to the voters to get an increase in tax rate, did you tell them that it was going to be to pay Robin Hood? Or did that happen and slip the...all the brochures and everything? I mean, to be paying for other school districts just doesn't seem fair to the taxpayer. Your Arlington taxpayer is in a recession and is being taxed enough. I suggest we lower it three cents more than what the proposed tax rate is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Next, we will consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of the individual discussed in closed session for Assistant Principal
Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. At this time, I'd move that we approve the ratification of the individual discussed in closed session.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion by Mr. Chapa and a second by Mr. Will Banks. Any discussion? Since trustee Hibbs is with us virtually, we will do a roll call vote. Mr. Hibbs?
Mr. Hibbs, yes.
Dr. Raj?
Aaron Raj, yes.
Mr. Will Banks?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Ms. McMura?
Sarah McMura, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Mrs. Mays?
Keisha Mays, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes. All vote in the affirmative, and the motion passes.
Thank you, President Fowler, and I'd like to introduce our new Assistant Principal for PRC STEM Academy, Dr. Kiwana Carter. She'll stand up. Dr. Carter, and you'll see her information here, is quite accomplished. At Lamar University for Bachelor of Science for Kinesiology, St. Mary's College for Master of Arts, back to Lamar University for School Counseling Masters, and a Master's in Administration, and then a Doctor of Education in Ed Leadership. Most recently was the counselor at Gunn Junior High and Fine Arts Dual Language Academy, has been a counselor at PRC STEM Academy, and an eighth grade teacher, history teacher and coach at Shackelford Junior High, has also taught health, dance, PE, and has coached in other districts. Dr. Carter, congratulations and welcome to the Assistant Principalship.
Is there anything she hasn't taught? This woman can do it all, I'm telling you. That is awesome. Next on our agenda are the action items. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and this evening we bring for your consideration the adoption of the 2022 tax rate. This is something that the board is familiar with. We presented a lot of financial information to get to this point, and a lot of the pieces have now come together. So I'm going to ask Ms. Martin, our Assistant Superintendent, to lead us through this presentation of the 2022 tax rate.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Good evening, President Fowler and the board. This evening we'll be discussing the proposed tax rate and the budgeting adoption process. As a highlight, this is the timeline where we...of the process. In June 2022, that was the public meeting where we discussed the budget and the proposed tax rate, and where we adopted the 2223 fiscal year budget. In July was when we received the property values from Tarrant Appraisal District, and from there, we submitted those values to TEA, where they came back to us in August with our calculation for the maximum compressed tax rate. Now it is the time to adopt the tax rate, and once we receive the tax rate, we provide that to the tax office, where they give us the tax roll, where we adopt the levy. So the district's total tax rate is composed of two components. It's...the first is your maintenance and operations, or MNO. This is what funds all school district day-to-day operations, including instruction, curriculum, teacher and staff compensation. The second part is your interest in sinking, and this is strictly used just to pay off bond debt, and it can't be used for anything else. Together, combined, they make the total rate, and we'll be discussing the various components of this rate today. First is the MNO tax rate. The first, it's allocated into three portions, and the first one is the maximum compressed tax rate, which is determined by TEA. The second level is made up of the golden pennies and the copper pennies. The golden penny is maxed out at eight cents, and then the next set is your copper pennies at nine. The golden pennies...to access the golden pennies and copper pennies, you would need a tax ratification election, which we held in 2021, but that all makes a total MNO tax rate. So the maximum compressed tax rate was included in the passage of House Bill 3 in 2019. It is...really, it is a compression that's lesser of the district's property value growth, not more than 2.5%, compared to the state's estimated property value growth. For 2022, the statewide compression was at 4.36%. So this established the ceiling of .8941 and the floor of .8046, which is really 90% of the ceiling, so it established a 10% equity band. And once again, this final MCR determination, it's determined by TEA. And so I wanted to show you the historical MCR. So as you walk through it, for example, prior to House Bill 3 in 1718 and 1819, our tier one level was a dollar. When House Bill 3 passed in 2019, that tier one tax rate was reduced statewide by seven cents, or seven pennies. So AISD went from a dollar to 93 cents. Then compression started in 2021. The statewide compression brought the range from .9164 to .8247. AISD's local value, property value growth, was 1.8%, which was less than 2.5%, so that just brought us to the floor of .9164. However, when you look at 2122, the state compression went down to .9134, and...but since our property value growth of 5.53% was greater than 2.5%, it further compressed us below that ceiling to .8901. So the same thing occurred for 2223, because our property value growth was 8.86%, even though the ceiling is at .8941, we are below it, compressing to .8380. And that is the MCR that was determined and calculated by TEA. So in putting it all together, because it was...it's two parts, right? With an AIC MCR of .8380, and we add the golden and the copper pennies, and as you can see, prior to 2021, the district had the four cents available to it. We passed the VATRE in 2020, and it enabled us to access that additional 13 pennies allowed. So with the .8380 MCR, plus the eight golden pennies, and the nine copper pennies, our total MNO tax rate is 10080, which is 0.0521 cents less than last year. The other piece is that AIC INS tax rate. And once again, this is strictly used to pay off bond debt, and it can't be used for anything else. And there is no change to the proposed INS rate of .03007. This rate includes the annual principal and interest payment obligations of the district, along with the plan...with the additional redemption of the Series 2014 bonds that will be callable in February 2023. So altogether, the maintenance and operations tax rate of 10080, plus the interest and sinking tax rate of 0.3007, is a total tax rate that we are proposing today of 13087. And here is another view of AISD's tax rate history. As mentioned, we were at that tier one of a dollar...tier one, tier two of a dollar four. Then in 1920 was a compression to 97 cents because of House Bill 3. Then in 2021 was the VATRE that brought us to a dollar 0864, and then from then, that compression that's been occurring for the past two years. So there is...there is specific language in the motion that's needed to adopt the ordinance that sets the tax rate. Specifically, the tax rate exceeds the no new revenue tax rate. The no new revenue rate is the rate that would theoretically produce a tax levy similar to last year. However, school district funding is a shared local and state funding formula, where the local share is determined by TEA. So the proposed total tax rate of 13087 meets the local share requirement. The no new revenue rate of 12416 is the rate if there is no local share requirement by the state, so the rate that would theoretically produce a similar levy to last year. So on your screen is the motion that is required to adopt the total tax rate of 13087. In addition to the tax...in addition to the motion, there's also required language in the ordinance when the proposed MNO tax rate exceeds the no new revenue MNO tax rate. This is the MNO-only portion of the no new revenue rate, and once again, the proposed total MNO tax rate of 10080 meets the local share requirement, and the no new revenue MNO rate of 0.9672 is the rate if there is no local share requirement by the state. In addition to the comparison to the no new revenue tax rate, we're also required to calculate the effect of the tax rate on a $100,000 home. With the proposed MNO tax rate of 10080 compared to last year's MNO tax rate of 10601, the difference in taxes for a $100,000 home is $52.10 less than previous year. Finally, there is also required language in the ordinance if the tax rate, if applied to the total taxable value, will have a levy that is greater than the previous year. After the tax rate adoption, we will provide the proposed tax rate to the Tarrant County Tax Office, and they'll determine the tax roll and the tax levy for the year. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Okay.
Okay.
That was a lot. That was a lot. Thank you. Do I have any trustees with questions? Do I have a motion? Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for the presentation and for all the legal requirements. I do have one comment that I'd like to point out on slide...your...the chart after the historical MCR. This shows the total tax rate for 2223.
Oh, yes.
That one, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So we...the rate we adopted last year, or the projected compression, that we...with the rate that we adopted back in June, the proposal that we adopted back in June was keeping it the same at 1.061, but we projected that we would lower to 1.0576. So that was what our current guess was going to be where we ended up today. But we are actually lower by five cents. So our tax rate, even though that legal notification says that our tax rate increases, that's really a misnomer, the rate is going down by five cents.
Yes.
So, just want to make that clear. And with that, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption...by the adoption of the tax rate of 1.3087, which is effectively a 5.4% increase of the tax rate, which is...
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Do I have a second? A second. Thank you, Ms. Mays. I have a motion by Mr. Will Banks and a second by Mrs. Mays. Please do a roll call vote. Mr. Hibbs?
John Hibbs, I vote aye.
Dr. Raj?
Aaron Raj, vote yes.
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Sarah McMura, I vote yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes.
And Melody Fowler, I vote yes. Motion passes. Thank you all. Now we move to action item A. Dr. Cavassos? Or was it...that was?
B.
Action item B. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and we move now to your consideration for TASB Policy Update 119 and the revisions to EF Local. I want to thank the Governance Committee for their diligence on reviewing these policies. We have a lot of information with our policy updates, and it does take some time. As you recall, we brought this as a discussion item, the previous board meeting for board consideration, and we bring it now for an action and your approval. So it is our recommendation the board approve these policies as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. And before we vote, I wanted to thank the Board Governance Committee. I know you've put in a lot of work and a lot of time into looking through all these policies and making changes and updates. I want to thank Justin Chapa as the chair, Keisha Mays, and Sarah McMura. Thank you so much for your hard work on this committee, and it is appreciated. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. At this time, I move to approve the policies included in TASB Policy Update 119 and EF Local as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. So I have a motion from Mr. Chapa and a second from Mr. Hibbs. Please vote with roll call. Mr. Hibbs?
John Hibbs, yes.
Aaron Raj, yes.
David Will Banks, yes.
Sarah McMura, I vote yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes. All vote in the affirmative. Now we'll move on to discussion action item A. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler, and this evening we bring for board consideration our 2022-2023 House Bill 3 and District Improvement Plan Goals and Performance Objectives. I also want to thank the Finance and Accountability Committee now for their work on this and their consideration on this, as they have reviewed this information as well. This is something that we bring forward to set our goals at this time of year, after we receive our results and things like that. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Lopez, who will lead us through this presentation, and she'll have some assistance maybe from Dr. Words and Dr. Brown and others. So, Dr. Lopez.
President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for the time this evening. I'm going to talk about our 2122 accountability results, a comparative analysis of those results to other districts, then move into the impact and the need to update our House Bill 3 five-year goals, in addition to our District Improvement Plan goals. So our 2122 accountability results from our spring 22 STAR EOC. For accountability for the district, our domains are visible and shown. I'm not going to go into the details like I usually do on accountability and what are all the rules for each domain. I'll keep this one simple. So for academic achievement, our final rating was 73, and for our academic growth, our final rating there was a 90. For relative performance, 79. And then for closing the gaps, our final rating was a 73. You take the largest of the...of 1, 2A, or 2B, weight that 70%, and that is why that 90 is bolded, because that's going to be 70% of our final calculation, and then Domain 3 is the remaining 30%, and that resulted in our overall grade of an 85. Now, we had projected this in June, but it was official when the ratings were released last month. For our campuses, a similar trend, the campus projections that we reported out in June were...I mean, they were accurate. And so we had projected 13As and had 13As, 37Bs, and we end up with those 37Bs, 18C campuses, and had the 18C campuses, and then the four that were not rated did indeed end up being not rated. So we got our accountability projections spot on and just in time for the system to change, so. When we get down into the specific domains, I'm going to talk just a little bit about Domain 1 and 2A. So we do our Domain 1 comparison. What we see is that in the numbers shown, our Domain 1 is the average of our Approaches, Meets, and our Masters, and we've broken it down by subject. So you can see for the first line, ELAR, those are our Reading and English 1, English 2 scores. So in 2019, the average of our Approaches, Meets, and Masters was 44%. We included 2021, even though we didn't have full participation, and it was an odd year, but we dropped down to 37%. And then in 2022, so our most recent results were up to 45%. So you can see in Reading, we've exceeded what we did in 2019. So that's fantastic. And then as we move throughout the subjects, we have an increase up from 2021, but not quite getting beyond what we did in 2019. So we still know...we know we have work to do, so. When we look at our comparison to other districts, we compare ourselves to all the districts in the state of Texas. If we look at our STAR Reading, Domain 1, raw score, not scaling it, because the scale scores are not linear, and they are going to change in this upcoming new cycle, so raw score formula will stay the same. So anyhow, when we...when we look, compare ourselves to all the districts in the state of Texas, we're the 29th percentile, and that's up 1% from what we were in 2021. But we like to narrow down and look at our comparison to our like districts, and so we do that by going above and below our economically disadvantaged rate by 10%. And so that brings us to 367 districts across the state of Texas that have a similar ECO DIS as Arlington, and we're 41st percentile, so we're up 2% from 2021. And we look at just STAR Reading. Our STAR Math, Domain 1, again, raw score, not scaled. We look at ourselves compared to all the districts in the state of Texas, we're in the 31st percentile, and that is up 10% from 2021. And narrowing down and looking at our...just our similar districts by ECO DIS, we're in the 39th percentile, and that's up 13% from 2021. Kind of just stick with reading and math, those were our main focus areas this last year. Moving into Domain 2A, that's the academic growth, again, taking the raw score and not the scaled score. When we compare ourselves to all the districts in the state of Texas, we're in the 71st percentile. And then when we narrow down and look at comparing ourselves just to our like districts, we're in the 80th percentile. All right. So I'm going to move from our A to F and Domain Accountability Performance into our House Bill 3 updates. The results had an impact on what we had originally planned, because we did outperform what we said we were going to do in year one with our goals. So I'll start with our early literacy updates. So when we look at our pre-K literacy goals, what we're doing this year is basing it on vendor-provided cut points. And prior, we had looked at just rapid letter naming as the criteria for kindergarten readiness. We wanted to do something more comprehensive, and so we included phonological awareness, which has sub-assessments related to syllabication, onset rhyme, alliteration, and rhyming. And so in order to be considered on track for kindergarten, you have to be on track in each of those indicators. And the subset is updated to exclusively include just our pre-K four-year-old students and what they should be doing by the end of the year. And so when we do that, we've obviously made the...there's more criteria, and so it makes it a little bit more difficult to be considered on track. And so initially, we had 73%, and we're moving towards 80. But we adjusted those goals, because when we added on the criteria, we did drop in the students that were considered on track down to 64%. But we're just going to be more aggressive in these first couple of years. We know we have the new universal pre-K program and curriculum and ready to attack have the new universal pre-K program and curriculum and ready to tackle that on-track kindergarten readiness. And so the goal this year is 68% from 64. Still landing, though, at that 80% that we said we were going to get to. And then, of course, we've broken down by subgroup. So I won't spend too much time. The slides are formatted all the same. You have the same demographic groups. Now, for kindergarten first and second grade, we had given M-Class last year and the year before that, we had given IStation. So our IStation goals are what you see in the 21-22 line, the first line on each table. But then we moved to M-Class. So we didn't have a relationship between the IStation performance and the M-Class performance. And only our English-speaking students took the M-Class test last year because our Spanish speakers were taking the Spanish R&amp;D test, and so they were working to help research and development of M-Class lectura, which we are using this year. So we didn't have a full population last year to create goals with. We will this year. So this year is baseline for our K through 2 literacy. And then as we move into our STAR Tested, we had initially 2021 used as a baseline to set those House Bill 3 five-year goals. If you recall, we wanted to be conservative and realistic. We know that COVID was still a very real thing and that we were still going to have absences and shortages. And so we tried to take those things into consideration. But our STAR 2022 results, they were, they were great. And they exceeded in every grade level what we said that we should do for year one and almost, almost all of them year two as well. So we wanted to update the goals because we didn't feel like our performance this year, that we should have a goal lower than that for the 23 STAR Test. And so what you'll see on this slide is that we're going to increase the percentage of third-grade students who score at the Approaches grade level or above on the STAR Reading from 57 to 74. And we had done 57% in 2021. We said we wanted to get to 61% in 2022. You see that on that first line on the 21-22 yearly targets table. But we got to 69%. And so it didn't seem right to say that we're going to go from 69% to 65%, which is, so we just adjusted. Still landing, the five-year goal is the same, and you'll see that on each of these slides. I'm not going to belabor that point. But the five-year goal is the same for most of these, and you'll just see that our performance in year one impacted what we need to do now moving forward. So just smaller increments for the remainder of the years. And then STAR third grade is broken down by the demographic group. So those goals have been updated as well. Eighth grade reading, increase the percentage of eighth-grade students who score at Approaches grade level or above on STAR Reading from 67 to 86%. So last year, we were at 67. We wanted to get to 73. And in spring of 2022, so this was recent spring, we got to 78. So we've updated now to say we would like to go from 78 to 81, still with 86 as the end goal. And then broken down our eighth grade by demographic group. English 1, we actually did what we wanted to do on English 1. We said we were going to go from 63% to 64%. This is the only subject that didn't exceed, and they actually did exactly what we said we were going to do. However, because our overall reading goal was being updated with all the 22 results, that needed to be consistent throughout all the grades. So went ahead and updated this and then put in a slightly more aggressive goal this year. Instead of going to 67, we're going to aim for 68% this year. And this is our first-time test takers. And that's broken down by demographic group. And then for our English 2, still going from 66 to 76%, except for, we said we wanted to get to 67. Last year, we got to 70. And then so the update there, but still reaching that 76% five-year goal. And then broken down by subgroup. I'll now move into the House Bill 3 early math. And so with our pre-K numeracy, this is also based on the vendor-provided cut points. And you must be on track for the following indicators. So rote counting, shape naming, number discrimination, number naming, shape discrimination, set counting and operations. And we've updated this to exclusively include just our pre-K 4 students. And so by restricting to pre-K 4, not including our pre-K 3, because we wanted to focus on, again, on that opening of that universal pre-K, we moved from 66% to 84% last year. And then so we've just updated. Now, this is the one that has a different end year, end of the five-years goals because at the five-year goal, when we had included our three-year-olds, still was not up to where we wanted our performance this year. So we're saying we'll go from 84 to 90. And then that is also broken down by subgroup. K2 numeracy, so Kinder first and second grade, last year, we gave math inventory. This year, we've moved to NWEA MAP, and there's not a relationship between the performance that we've evaluated. And so this is a baseline year. So I reported out what we had for math inventory, but we are doing a baseline with NWEA MAP. And we will report out on the categories provided by the vendor, just like we will with M-Class. We just don't have the goals set for Kinder first and second. We will have those next year. And moving into our STAR Tested grade, same thing. Five-year goals were based on the 2021 performance, and our 22 performance was better than our conservative goal. So we went ahead and updated all of these. And so I'm reporting out STAR third grade math. So still increase the percentage of third-grade students who scored Approaches grade level or above on STAR Math from 45 to 73% by August 2026. So our baseline was that 45, and that was in 2021. We had had to set a goal for 52% for this last spring, and we reached 62%. So updated the goals still with that 73% as the end goal. And broken down by demographic group. Our eighth grade math, we want to increase the percentage of eighth-grade students who scored at Approaches grade level or above from 39 to 84%. And this last year, we said we were going to go from 39 to 57. We got to 64. So we've updated those. This year, we're looking to go from 64 to 72, still reaching the 84% by the end of the five years. And then broken those down, of course, also by demographic group. And then finally, STAR EOC Algebra 1, increase the percentage of students who scored Approaches grade level or above on STAR Algebra 1 from 60 to 81%. And last year, we had said we were going to get to 67%. We got to 72. And so we went ahead and just made, again, made the goals slightly more aggressive, still getting to the 81%. And then broke that down by demographic group. All right, moving into our college career and military readiness. There are always changes to CCMR. So some of the proposed, proposed changes in the following areas of CCMR, discussion on college prep course requirements, criterion scores on AP or IB exams that are more aligned to college readiness was, I think, some of the wording that was used, which it feels like the AP and IB, they already are. However, there will be some other, maybe additional requirement that they're proposing onto that portion of the CCMR goal acquisition. Aligning CTE programs for industry-based certification. So you used to be able to just get an industry-based certification. Now, in addition to earning the certificate, you may have to do an aligned CTE pathway. So that would just make that one a little bit, a little bit more challenging to get a point. Rules and data collection around enlistment in the U.S. Armed Forces are changing, and we have the expected sunset of the Texas College Bridge opportunity. A lot of our students used this last year to get their CCMR point, and that's in 2024 that that's supposed to phase out. So with all the changing rules, it's hard to make a five-year projection. But we went ahead and said, okay, if it was going to stay exactly as is right now, and we'll go ahead and base our five-year goals off that. And so increase the percentage of students who receive a CCMR point from 63% to 73%. We just went ahead and were, again, a little conservative with a 10% increase across the five years because kind of not knowing what the terrain would be like. And so this year, we're looking to go from 63 to 67%. Broken down by demographic group as well. So those are the House Bill 3 updates to the five-year goals that y'all had approved last year. Now looking at the 22-23 District Improvement Plan. So our first DIP goal, the performance objective, is related to our overall district reading performance. This is going to be all of our tested grades, third through high school, so pretty much third through English 2. We want to increase the percentage of overall students who scored Approaches grade level or above on the STAR Reading from 61% to 79% by August 2026. That's our five-year goal. This year in our DIP, we want to go from 71% to 74%. And so that's what we have, are proposing in our District Improvement Plan for 22-23. And then our DIP goal 1, performance objective 2, so still related to academic achievement, want to increase the percentage of students who score at the Approaches grade level or above on STAR Math from 51 to 79 by August 2026. We have that five-year goal. And for this year's plan, we're wanting to go from 64% to 70%. College career military readiness, looking to increase from 63 to 73 of our students who earn a CCMR point in the five years. This year, looking specifically at 63 to 67% in our, in our DIP. And then our third goal, performance objective, is related to attendance. We'd like AISD students to increase their attendance rate from 90.9 to 93%. And so I have a recommendation that administration, we recommend that the board adopt the revised House Bill 3 goals and the District Improvement Plan goals and performance objectives that I've just presented.
Thank you so much, Dr. Lopez. I think this is positive. I think this is all good information, and it looks like our students and our teachers are working extremely hard, and we should all be very proud of them. I like, I think the goals that you've set are not outrageous. I think we can do this. We're already exceeding so many things. So thank you so much for this information. We have a few questions here. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. Dr. Lopez, I just have a few comments and questions.
Yes, sir.
The first question I had, as you alluded at the beginning of your presentation, that the accountability system is changing again.
Yes, sir.
Can you go into a little bit more detail about what we expect on that front?
So, well, for growth, right now, students can earn a zero, half or one point. And it depends on their performance level in the prior year to their current performance level, so Approaches, Meets or Masters. But it also their progress measure, which is based on their scale score difference. So this year, because of the STAR redesign, so the test is changing, so they can't do the scale score calculation from prior year to current year. So they're just going to make it categorical. So they're just going to look at prior year performance level, Approaches, Meets or Masters versus this year's Approaches, Meets or Masters. But they're adding in two more categories. So they're going to make it low approaches or high approaches. And then low did not meets, high did not meets. Meets, they're leaving alone, and Masters, so far, this is not final, it's proposed, they'll leave those alone. So we're kind of going from four performance levels to six. And then instead of earning just zero, half or one point, you can earn anywhere from zero to up to three points. We'll know more about that around November is when TEA is going to release that, more information on that.
So does it, is the expectation also that the accountability system is going to depend even more on STAR test results going forward?
I feel like it'll probably be about the same. Now, for the district, the calculation is going to, well, is proposed to be weighted proportion of all the campuses. So the district calculation, which in the past has been the same as high school calculation, so Domain 1, for example, is 40% STAR, 40% CCR, and then 20% graduation. That's going away. And so, I mean, yes, so then for a district calculation, probably rely more on the STAR performance.
Right.
But, I mean, the domains aren't changing, the formulas aren't changing, but just the scaling, so the raw to the scale, that's going to change. In Domain 3, the targets for each of the components are going to change. Instead of just yes or no in Domain 3, you either get the point or you don't get the point for meeting the target. They're looking at a graded outcome. So you could get anywhere from zero to four points. So it'll be interesting changes.
Yeah, I would just add that these are not minor changes. And when they say the STAR redesign is a, is a nice way of saying that they're changing the test.
Yeah.
Completely. And the weights will change and the distributions will change. Anytime there's a transition, you may remember some of this, but anytime there's a transition, the challenge is that it won't be finalized until the year the students are taking the test. The rules don't really get finalized, some of them in November, but then some are pushed into the spring and how it's going to actually be calculated in the A through F. And that's a big challenge. And so sometimes, highly unlikely, and there's no even discussion of this, but in the past, they've had a year of transition when they make major changes to a test. That then tries to equate back and things like that. There's no discussion of that. It's just, here are the changes, here's what's maybe coming, and then the application will happen in the spring of '23. Just to be clear, they're major changes. And we do have a board update that we'll be doing a presentation as we learn more specifics because a lot of it is anticipated. Even today, when the commissioner's called, there was more information about the changes that are being anticipated. Of course, they're not decided yet. So that's, that's a challenge for not only us, but for the teachers and everybody else, our students in particular, who are, these are high-stakes tests. They continue to be high-stakes tests. And so we're going to progress through this year, but it's a good question, Mr. Chapa. Thank you.
And that's kind of where I was going, because I know that nationwide, and you've seen this in Texas, too, it seems like every time we switch an accountability system, the next year or two, you know, the, the results, you know, so to speak, go down. And that, that's just replicated, it seems like, all over the place. And so you might actually, if you were on the old system, you might continue to appear to be doing just as well. But just because you're shifting an accountability system, it might look like you're dropping off a little bit. So do we, is there a worry that by adopting these more aggressive five-year goals, which I think are, it's great news that we've made as much progress as we have, but is there some concern that we might be setting ourselves up for a bit of a drop next year just by virtue of the accountability system changing?
Possibly. However, in many of the grade levels, the goal for this coming year would have been lower than what we did this spring, and that just didn't feel right.
Got it.
To, to, I mean, there's, there always could be, I wouldn't say it's going to be linear growth. So, but I would expect that there would be still continued growth. However, you're, I mean, with the STAR redesign, it's, it is hard to
Right.
The accountability system changing, the test changing, I mean, that is hard to kind of
I just want to make sure we're looking, as we're looking forward, because I get the, I get the impulse, right? We, we did much better than we expected, and so we need to adjust our goals because it doesn't make sense, right? You know, we're going to do a good job next year if we, you know, as long as we don't do worse than we thought we were going to do, right? That's a weird thing to do. But I also just want the, I don't want the district, and I don't want our teachers to feel like they're in the position of, if by virtue of just a shift in the accountability system, we don't meet these goals next year, that somehow it means things are awry or things are somehow wrong, when really, if the same system were in place, we would continue on the trajectory or if not better than what you've mapped out here on the five-year plan. And so it feels a lot like moving the goalposts in the middle by the state, but I guess that's just something we're going to have to cross when we get there. I mean, that's what they do.
Yeah.
You know, we can't do too well, right? Because then they might not have something to do.
On your point, the CCMR is the one that has the biggest variability, and it has such a big impact on high schools.
Right. And I, and I was going to mention the CCMR because they've been messing with CCMR almost since this came out.
Yes.
Almost simply because the districts, especially districts like us, were doing very well with it, which is, you know, why, why would we want to make us look worse when we're doing well? I don't know, but that's something that we can ask the state. That's sort of the overall, that's really, I did have one more, I did have one more question. So is there, I know that we have to deal with the attendance aspect and the percentage of attendance. Is there any talk that y'all have heard on the administration and from the state about moving to enrollment-based instead of attendance-based?
The only talk that has been had related to that, that I can surmise is that they're not interested.
Which is really surprising to hear. And I know this is something that we, you know, we may look at as a governance committee for our legislative agenda, whether the legislature wants to hear it or not, is I think that something that was revealed the last few years with COVID is that the attendance system is a very poor way to do it because you're essentially penalizing schools, which has always been the case. But I think it highlights the fact that you're penalizing schools for something they don't have a control over. And why would we want to incentivize kids coming to school sick? You know, and the cynical version of it, we hear from some folks, is that we're just trying to push attendance because we need, we need the money. Well, we do want kids in seats, right? But there also might be legitimate reasons that a kid doesn't come to school. And so while I think it's great that we do have an attendance goal here, you know, I always worry about, you know, getting these emails when, and I think it happened, there was a year, I hadn't been on the board long, maybe eight, ten, nineteen, there was a particularly bad flu a particularly bad flu year, and there were actually some campuses around the area that were closing, and we saw the drips, dips in attendance during the flu outbreak, and it was like, well, yeah, it's the flu, like, the schools aren't doing anything different. And I, you know, being on the TASB board, we looked at some data at our last meeting that really the dip in attendance that we saw here has been replicated, not just statewide, but nationwide, that a lot of the major districts were off in their attendance by about ten percent even last year, as we were coming out of COVID. And it's almost directly attributable to the fact that we were open, but there was still a virus circulating in the community, and without hold harmless and things like that at the state level, you know, we otherwise would have been hit for it. And so I just, you know, more of a commentary, but I do hope that that's something that eventually changes, because I don't, I don't think it's, I don't know if it's ever been fair, but it certainly doesn't seem like a fair thing to force on districts in an accountability system, not, let alone a funding system at this point. And so those are my unsolicited thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. Can we go back to the slide? It was one of the first slides, and it has the 2022 STAR reading performance comparison with our similar districts.
Yes.
Forty-first percentile, yes, thank you. I know that the STAR redesign was mentioned, but we also are going on an all-digital platform for STAR testing across the state this year. So I'm curious if we have any general idea of how many of our comparison districts went ahead last year and opted in for that digital platform? Because I'm curious to know what the implications will be with districts that waited, and then districts that went ahead and pulled the trigger on digital last year. Can y'all, do y'all have any insight on that?
Not at the moment, but that's, I believe, data that we can get our hands on.
That would be wonderful, because I, I myself am curious about that, and I think especially for our younger students, I particularly think about third grade. I think that that's going to be very different, for them to take a literacy assessment on a computer, especially with the redesign, how writing is so emphasized this year. So I would really appreciate that data, if, even if you can gauge a general idea, because I'm curious to know if we're going to be kind of with the pack or behind the pack in regards to that digital platform. So thank you. One more question, I noticed that across the board, our students who receive special ed services from the baseline, and then looking at our goals, I like, I like kind of where we're headed there. And again, I think about this digital platform. I hope that staff is making every effort to ensure that those accommodations that are available to our special needs students are being really well communicated, because sometimes the accommodations can make or break student success, especially with our kids that are served with special ed services. So that was my only consideration, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler, and thank you, Dr. Lopez. This is great news. We always love the, being the position that we overshot our goal for year two, and, you know, I know, looking at some of these, how far we overshot in year two, the, the impulse would be to reset our end goal. But, you know, when looking at the original graphs, I think, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but the law of diminishing returns on growth kicks in in academic performance, right? And so it's probably better that they're more curvilinear in their glide path to our end goal now, instead of more straight line. But having said that, if we start overshooting our goal next year, I think that probably begs the question that it's maybe time to, to look at increasing our, our year-five goal. So, do you concur?
We absolutely can. If.
That makes, that makes sense. And I was going to, I think Mr. Chapa brought some of this up, the variability, which is why, when he asked about adjusting the goal.
Yeah.
And we're not adjusting the end goal yet, because of that variability.
Because the uncertainty.
Yeah.
Yeah. So more the reason to be conservative now until we, some of those unknown unknowns and known unknowns get answered.
Yeah.
Right? So, one of the things, and I apologize, it's been crazy at work, I was very curious, I like how you put on, when you compare ourself to our similar ECO dis, districts across the state, you put the, you broke it out by domain one and domain two grow, two-way To me, you know, harking back to 2019, we had a really good aggressive goal, and we were on the verge of making that goal, and that was to be in the top quartile. And first of all, I don't want to mix up language, so top quart, is that the fourth quartile for you, the top one, or the first quartile? Always.
When you say top, I mean, I know what that means, so you want us to be above seventy-five percent? Yeah, I understand.
But the way it looks now, we're, you know, currently sitting in the second, would you call it the second quartile or the third quart?
Yeah.
We're, we're next to the bottom quartile.
Yeah.
And some cases verging into the next to the top quartile. So, which is good, but that's a drop from where we were pre-COVID, correct? We were, we were kind of.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So what I'm curious is where we are, you've got like plus one percent over twenty, I'm looking at the first slide.
I'm sorry, you said similar districts, I moved on to that. So if we just look at all Texas districts, yes, so up one percent.
Oh, no, 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 I don't want to look at that one.
Okay.
The similar districts.
Okay.
So we're up two percent on the first one on STAR reading. What I'm curious is, where are we versus 2019?
Still down sixteen percent. No, I'm sorry, reading fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent. So, and then we had a whole lot more growth this year, and we were seeing, you know, double-digit increases in growth, which accounts for us being in inevitable, this great position that we're in, that we're overshooting our goals. But when you look at it, pre-COVID to now, it's fair to say that we fell more raw-score-wise versus our peer districts last year. But then we caught up more than they did this year. But overall, where are we net-net? And we're still, so we've slipped compared, you know, bottom line is, we've slipped when you go back to 2019 to where we are now. And so, again, I think it behooves us to really focus in on that domain one performance, average meets and masters, and look at where we are relative to those peers, and continue to monitor those goals and drive to get into that top quartile. So I think that's where, you know, the goals we set were great, we're overshooting them, but I think that's the big goal for us, is to be in that top quartile versus our peers. And it appears we're getting there. We had a little bit of a road bump last year that slowed us down, but we're catching up. So let's continue to keep, catch up, and, you know, the teachers and everyone are doing a fantastic job, and so it's all good news, but we do have work to do. So we can't lose sight of that. There was another question I had.
I will say, on our, our two-A, from 2019, we are up. So when we compare our two-A this year to our two-A in 2019, we are up almost ten percent. So if that trend continues.
Yeah.
We will, we will start to see what you're saying is, that we need to continue moving towards the top in, as far as domain one performance.
Right.
Continuing having that growth in our reading and math, and of course, I mean, other subjects, but when we look at just, just reading and math, continuing to have that growth in two-A, and regardless of how they scale it, and regardless of how they put points to it, but continuing growth there, will have a relationship and an impact on domain one that will move us.
Right.
Towards getting back to the top.
Exactly. So, again, it, it, overall, great, great news, and if we continue to blow out our HB3 goals next year, then it's time to kind of start thinking, hey, and then maybe we should bump up those year-five goals. So, everything looks good. I know we've done our beginning-of-year interim screener test, so we can see where kids are, the interim progress throughout the year. When are we scheduling the second checkpoint? And when do you anticipate coming back to the board where we are looking at that first checkpoint versus beginning-of-year goals?
So.
I mean, beginning-of-year assessments.
Beginning, beginning-of-year, I believe we're reporting out on October 6th, beginning-of-year as well as CA1, as of right now, is what we have scheduled. And then we do the MOY assessment in January when we return, so I would imagine it would be, I think, the first in February, the first meeting in February is when we scheduled it out, but I don't, I can't remember off the top of my head. But that's when we would do a comparison from BOY to MOY.
Yeah. Okay. That's great. And, you know, the one thing I'll ask is, when we start doing those interim, interim progress checks throughout the year with our screener data, if that we can come up with a nice, clear format, because every screener is different, they all have their own charts, but we're really, you know, looking at that absolute growth from the beginning of year measure, you know, you know, green, yellow, or red on where we are on each of those checkpoints throughout the year, in a way that really hones in on a unified target with a, you know, so we're comparing apples to apples.
Yes, sir.
It was very difficult last year, kind of make, you know, I know, I know a lot of my colleagues were kind of a little glossy-eyed and confused on those interim progress reports. So, if, if we can simplify that, great.
Yes, sir.
So, but again, fantastic news, really appreciate the hard work, and the growth that we've seen. So, you know, it's kind of like watching a football game where we didn't quite do as well as I hoped, the first quarter, but now that, you know, we've done the second quarter, we're looking fantastic. So, so, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Mrs. Mays?
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you, Dr. Lopez. I really appreciate you being able to take all of this data, put it together in a format where we can look at it in different ways, vertically, horizontally, however. One thing that I think that this shows is, first off, what an amazing job our students and our staff and our teachers did during this period of time. To me, that was number one. What a way to be able to piggyback off of success during a time of such unknown. I appreciate the adjustments in our goals, leaving our end goals the same, because once again, we're going to have a period of unknown. So, you know, we're setting an expectation, but one that was actually met and exceeded by our students and our teachers, and for that, that's a win-win. And I hope that we just take that momentum and continue on, and whatever our students and our teachers continue to need, that we as a board, the district itself, can continue to provide those things for them to do better and beyond what we ever imagined. So appreciate and know that y'all will continue to look for any opportunities for adjustments that needs to be made, because that's what you do, and we appreciate because you do it very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler. Sorry, one of my colleagues suggested that, you know, when looking at our, our district and DIP, are the, you know, the comparisons that you presented at the, at the beginning that we were just talking about, compared to our ECO dis peers, are those formally part of our DIP to be in that top quartile or not?
No, sir.
Okay, that's just something we do on the, on the side. Is it, would it, you know, maybe not our DIP is appropriate, but is there some formal ratification of that as a goal that we can adopt as a board? Or a vehicle to adopt that as a goal, or is it just something we do informally?
I think the way it started was, it was pretty much self-imposed as, as another way to look at the data. Because it is percentile, and because it is, you know, a distribution, and in and out, depending on the percentages of economic disadvantage, it was just another way to look at it. It is a rigorous way to look at it, but I don't know that it's subject to a goal at this point on that percentile rank. I'd have to think more about it, but it was just a different view. There's no state view of this, there's no local view of this other than us. It's just one more way of looking at it when, when we try to think of what, and we've had plenty of this discussion, of what is that variable, or that, that constant, I should say, that impacts scores across the state, and it unfortunately happens to be this economically disadvantaged, right?
Yeah.
Our setting of plus and minus ten was our setting of that, because we wanted to get a good, healthy number. We know economically disadvantaged, and the challenges that that brings and opportunities that brings are pretty consistent with poverty. So it, I probably want to set it more as something, as a different way of looking at our results. There are plenty, I think, this is just my, my opinion here, there are plenty of state-imposed goals, district goals, campus goals, and, and, and school grade level goals, that adding one more that has a percentile that then, to be communicated and really impacted in a different way, I think, would probably be very challenging, just to be clear, for the entire system as a goal. Because we do take the goals, as we should, across the system very seriously. So we're going to, we're going to work on those goals, and we're going to benchmark those goals, and we would then be permeating that across the system as a, as a now, it's a, this type of comparison with economic disadvantage. And I just think that there are plenty of, of healthy goals that the state imposes, that we have come up with ourselves, with screeners and all that, that I would continue to leave this one as just another way, an important way, but another way of looking at our results.
No, that's totally fair, Dr. Cavassos, and I appreciate that perspective, because the school accountability is so complex, and as you mentioned, our scores are highly correlated to socioeconomic status of our students, and it is highly correlated. And, but I think, looking at it, too, you know, and part of the talk, you know, I'm going to, I was asked to be a part of, we're looking at aligning, you know, the district strategic plan, the, the district strategic plans to your campus plans all the way down to the classroom, and having that alignment, and also asking, you know, what are you trying to solve? You know, what's most important for you as a board in terms of strategically mapping out your school improvement plans? And part of that question comes down to, you know, do, are you looking for increasing the number of students that are passing, or are you looking at, for your district as a whole, to be more competitive against your similar peers? And I think that perspective is important. I think having a multi-dimensional approach to, or looking at from multiple perspectives, as you quite eloquently pointed out, is, is, is beneficial. And I think it's beneficial for us as a board to know how we're doing against the Dallas, the Houston's, the other large urban school districts. But as Natalie will point out, you want to, you can't like just do one-off comparisons, that doesn't give you an accurate picture, but you do want to pick your, pick your cohort and look competitively, how we are as a large urban district in the state of Texas, performance-wise versus our peers. And like I said, first quarter, we slipped. They didn't, they didn't make as many mistakes as we did, i.e., last year. This year, we're catching up, and then some. So, and I think winning the game and being in that top group is a noble goal, and I think that's one I think we as a board should maybe informally adopt, if not formally adopt, to make sure we get back on top. Because we should, you know, we are a premier school district, we're executing a lot, a lot of ways, but we also want to make sure that we're executing in terms of student performance. And we know we can get our students to that top tier. And I think that's a lofty goal, and I think it's an admirable goal, and one we should adopt.
Before you would, before we would do something like that, we would need to Before you would, before we would do something like that, we would need to know what it would take to get into the top quartile. So if, just thinking about this mathematically, if we have a goal of 69 to 71 percent, and this is just third grade, actually, let me go ahead and go to reading. If our goal for reading is 71 to 74 percent, does 74 percent get you comparatively into that top quartile is one thing we would need to know. So if we set a goal saying we want to be in the top quartile, but we then also set this goal of we want to get to 74 percent, we would just need to make sure that those numbers were aligned.
Are aligned. Again, that's another important, that's why it's a multi-dimensional, or from multiple perspectives, aligning those goals. And, you know, we are looking at a lot of data with our HB3 goals. It's one of the reasons why I made the plea for when we start getting the interim data, which can be a lot of data, when you start breaking it out into SEPOPS, that we do it in, in a concise way that really tells that narrative. Are we, are we making that growth interim in the year to get us to that 74 percent? And I know our screener data is not correlated, and it's changing, and it's really hard to do, but we can make estimates of where we need to be at the end of the year on that screener data to know that we're probably going to see that 74 percent, say on reading here in the example that you have. But then also, is that 74 percent, you know, from a governance standpoint of us as a district wanting to be a premier district with our, our similar large urban peers, is that goal aligned with that? And so I think, you know, I liked how we did a board workshop to discuss all of these things and really understand the difference. You know, you guys did a great job of explaining the difference between a progress measure and a process measure and a outcome measure and, and, and process measures. So all those things are important when it comes to school improvement. And I would love to see us do another one and kind of look at these and say, where do we want to end up, you know, from a big picture standpoint? And are these goals aligned? Certainly, next year, if we have the chance to readjust our year five goals for our HB3 goals, it's very important, and I agree, Dr. Lopez, all of these things need to be aligned.
And next year might also be opportunity, because, a good opportunity, because the star redesign will have taken place, the online will have taken place, the accountability system change will have taken place, and it might just be a good time to then say, okay, are we, are three through five getting us to where we want to go? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Dr. Raj.
Thank you, President Fowler. Thank you, Dr. Lopez, managing all of these numbers and, and the predictions. It's a, it is a heavy task, at least from our perspective. You've got us all, all swayed and hooked on, on your skill there. So it would be interesting, I don't know if that's a formal request for the secretary to write down, Mr. Will Banks, that is an interesting metric to look at, to see where we're, where we're going to go, what we, what these targets would have to do to make that occur. I'm curious about that. It makes sense. But then actually looking at it next year when things have changed. However, we're also heading into a legislative session where things may change even more. Woo-hoo! And my experience, unfortunately, in this tenure of public service, has been the state accountability, even before I got here, the state accountability system seems to always change when everybody's doing pretty good. Isn't that kind of interesting? Work your numbers on that one. The, it's frustrating, and as we've said, and has been said here tonight, ultimately, things come down too much on a high-stakes test. Ultimately, that stratified out is our economically disadvantaged population that comes out mostly on the bottom. There's a few outliers there, but for the most part, that's what it is. So I guess I'll, I'll try to get down off the, the box like Mr. Chapa was earlier as well, like-minded. So on the attendance rate, the 90.9 to 93, I know this year we're pushing for 93, 94, and I know it's only September 15th. You might not know this or be the appropriate person to ask, do we, are, where are we trending right now? What does it look like?
Natalie knows.
We were, yeah, we were above, and just when we did the initial first three weeks, and we are working on a report that will just tell us at any point in time, but.
Okay.
And the reason it's, it's, we have to think about that is because the first three weeks are not the best times to take the attendance.
Right, right.
Because until you show up to school, you're, you're not absent.
Yep.
Right, until you, so you know all that. And, and so cautiously, we're above, but it's not, we're not at the point to say that's, that's a trend or anything like that.
Yeah.
Not the first three weeks of school.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll see. I look forward to updates on that, and I'm, I don't know that we'd have to, but I'd be, I'd be very excited if we have to modify that target from a 93 up to a 94.
Yeah. So, Dr. Raj, just to be clear, on, for, when the board adopts these goals, the DIP goal that has the attendance, that'll be part of our reporting. Anything that's adopted will be reported, so you'll get frequent updates on the, on the attendance as well.
Absolutely.
So, but that's where we're trending right now.
Yeah.
It's early.
Yes. Okay. And yeah, I, I am concerned heading into the legislative session that there's going to be tweaks. I, and you, you probably have this data, and I think maybe, I don't know if it was just in conversations with you or just here on the dais. Overall, as far as district, district performance, whether across all districts in the state or like districts, how many saw, and I guess maybe percentage-wise, the, a big bounce like we did versus staying the same versus not doing as well?
In?
Just overall, in, in accountability ratings, let's just say the district rating overall, ours is an 85. We'll just use that.
I would have to find out the answer. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, that's fine, and maybe that's a little unfair. The reason I'm asking and saying that is I'm a bit concerned that, you know, we fared very well. It seems most around here did fare very well. I think we outperformed several. My concern is statewide, maybe that data is similar, and that's going to be one of those points during legislative session where they're like, yeah, we really need to significantly change this, because this isn't giving us good results. We're all doing great, everybody's bouncing back. The, the learning loss isn't as much, oh, we need to challenge more. That's just, I guess I'm, I'm starting to sound cantankerous up here. I've just, I've seen this just year in, year out, session after session. It's just, anyway, okay. So the other question that I would have in the, on dovetailing on Ms. McMurrough's questioning on the, the computerized STAR exam this year, will our students, and it might be Dr. Wertz to answer, will they have the opportunity to do the practice runs? All of them? Okay, okay. All right, well, that's, that's something, anyway. I'm very concerned. No, you're, you're good.
Frequently, yeah. We have many opportunities for them to practice.
Yeah, all, all the curriculum assessments and things will be online, and for what it's worth, and the state, again, for what it's worth in discernment of when the state says it, but there seems to be little difference in the, in the results of, of online and paper.
Interesting.
And we see a lot of that as well, that there isn't a marked difference.
Okay.
And the research bears that out. But yes, online and a redesigned test, those things may get confused, I don't mean the students would be confused, but those, that research could get confused in saying, hey, wait a minute, you know, we redesigned the test and online shouldn't make a difference. What made the difference? But generally speaking, research even supports that online and paper, there is no real marked difference.
Right.
What's, who's the state's chosen vendor on this now?
Cambium.
Oh, it's Cambium, okay. And they've been doing it for, what, four years now?
Well, it's even beyond BAME, Dr. Raj, it's, it's just, it's pretty historical that anytime there's online and paper.
Oh, no, I know, I know, I was just curious. I couldn't remember. I, I was, I was like, I know it's not Pearson, I can't remember who it is now.
Right, it went to ETS and then to Cambium, is that correct, Dr. Porterfield? Yes, okay.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, thank you very much. I, I think the, everything you said makes sense, that the targets are, are good, they're, it's promising. We'll see what the great unknown new, new design is. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. Thank you so much, Dr. Lopez. We appreciate it. Any other questions? No? Thank you so much.
Do I have a motion?
Sorry. I'm, thank you, President Fowler. I move to adopt the revised HB3 goals and district improvement plan and performance objectives as they were presented.
Second. I second.
Can we hear you? Nope, I second. Thank you, Ms. Mays. I have a motion by Ms. McMurrough and a second by Mrs. Mays. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Hibbs?
John Hibbs, yes.
Dr. Raj?
Aaron Raj, yes. David Willbanks, yes.
Sarah McMurrough, I vote yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Yasha Mays, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes. All vote in the affirmative, the motion passes. We now move on to our discussion item one. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Fowler, and this evening we bring a brief financial update, because it is actually brief, prior to the consent agenda and your consideration of that, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. President Fowler, trustees, as Dr. Cavassos said, tonight's presentation will be brief. It's that time of year where we are looking at two fiscal years, and that data is still not available to where that we can report it out to you where we need to. So in your packet tonight, you'll see the financial report and the investment reports as of July 31st, 2022. These are standard items that we present to you on a monthly basis, and it also includes our purchases greater than $50,000 that are exempt from bid per CH local. So again, as I said, this is the time when we're working on two fiscal years. This table depicts the timeline for the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2022. It's just a little timeline to share out with you. Our external auditors will be on site in the district starting September 19th through the end of the, end of the month, September 30th. A draft of the annual report at that time will be presented to the audit committee in October, and the final report will be presented to the board for approval on November 17th. The TEA deadline for submission of the report is November 27th, and we are currently on schedule to meet all those deadlines. At the September 1st meeting, Dr. Cavassos announced the district's preliminary first rating. Our team appreciates all the positive comments from the board and the superintendent. We received a score of 98, and a public hearing will be held at the October 18th board meeting. Mrs. Martin will prepare the required report and present the data in greater detail per statutory requirements. So we'll move on to the current fiscal year, 2223. Tonight, I'll share highlights on the ESAR federal funding, the 2014 bond financials, and the 2019 bond financials. Next month, we'll take a closer look at the general operating fund and the other major funds that I share out with you periodically. Our goal for next month is to bring an amended budget to the board, and for your approval, at that time, we'll have information on the six weeks reporting, and our finance team will be able to calculate better the impact to the current year's budget based on where our attendance is. So for ESAR, this table shows the current financials. As a reminder, these are elementary and secondary emergency relief funds provided by the federal government to address the impact of COVID-19. ESAR I is completely expended. We received over $15 million, and these funds were used to cover the loss of average daily attendance in 2020, if you recall. We were awarded $59.9 million in ESAR II funds. To date, we have spent $35.9 million, and we have $18.2 million remaining. These funds are available to use in case of revenue loss as a result of a drop in attendance for the current fiscal year, if we, if we encounter that. The ESAR III award was $134 million as of July 31st. We have spent $28.6 million or right at 25% of those funds. Moving to our 2014 bond, this table is as of July 31st as well. It doesn't include any of the expenditures for August. Our total revenue, less expenditures and projects in process, result in the remaining amount that you see there. As of July, we have just over $8 million left in the 2014 bond. The roof replacements for maintenance buildings at the service center account for the majority of the projects that you see currently in process. And then to just wrap up with the 2019 bond, as of July 31st, 2022, $709 million of the $966 million approved by the voters has been issued. We have expended approximately $217 million with projects in process totaling slightly above $83 million. Of the issued bonds, we currently have $410 million remaining. We have $263 million of authorized bonds that we have not yet issued. Historically, we have completed these bond sales in February, as you recall. We're currently evaluating our bond spending plan, making some adjustments to that, and so we're anticipating that we will not have to do a bond sale in February. A couple of factors we're looking at as related to that is the amount of current funding that we have on hand right now. We have $410 million, and so we're evaluating the spending plan to see if over the next year, we will use some of that $410 million versus going out for a bond sale and paying those higher interest rates in selling those bonds. So we've spoke with our financial advisor, and he's working with us on that to see what the timing of that might be. Once we get the corrected spending plan, we know how much money we need, we could possibly go out for a bond sale in August. But we're looking at that and monitoring it closely so that we don't go and, and get any money that we don't need right now with what we have on hand. And that concludes my update. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Do we have any questions from the trustees? Doesn't look like it. Thank you so much, Mrs. Moss. Great presentation as always. Thank you and your team for always keeping us updated, and especially for being so conservative. We know that you like to err on the side of caution and be conservative with the taxpayers' money, and we appreciate that so much. Thank you, Mrs. Moss. We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion?
President Fowler?
Yes, Mr. Hibbs.
I would, I would ask that we pull consent agenda A, number 22091505, security detection system.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Do we discuss that item first? Go ahead and bother the others. Okay. We'll now vote on the consent agenda with the exception of 22091505. We'll do, all right, we'll still a roll call vote?
John Hibbs, yes.
I move to adopt that with that one exception.
Thank you, Mr. Willbanks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McMurrough. All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Is that right?
John Hibbs, yes.
Erin Raich, yes. David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Sarah McMurrough, I vote yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes. Motion passes with the exception of the twenty-two oh nine one five oh five. We will now open it for discussion. Mr. Hibbs?
President Fowler, I pulled this because what I wanted to do is, one, I think it's important that we bring to the community that we as a board, the administration, are consistently trying to improve the layering of our security processes. And the security detection system that is, is being mentioned gives us, you know, a, another opportunity to assist in the security measures that we have. And with this one, it really assists with individuals entering our schools, essentially offering another advanced proactive tool to detect and identify weapons that potentially may be entering our schools. You know, I really think that as we strive to layer our security within our schools, this is yet another tool that we have within our safety procedures and protocols. It is not a catch-all, but I do believe that it is going to give us one more opportunity to provide for our schools to be protected, to give teachers, students, those that are visiting our schools, another level of confidence that, hey, the administration, the district working with our community authorities are putting measures in place that is trying to do everything within our power to ensure our schools are safe. I believe that this is also looking at being funded from the 2014 bond funds, which I'm in full favor with. I believe that this is a good use for capital needs, and it falls under the security measures that the voters approved back in 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Is there a motion to accept this consent agenda item now? Okay. Mr. Hibbs, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, I, I, I'm sorry, I was going to show deference to my colleagues that were in the room. I would move that we accept consent agenda A, twenty-two oh nine one five oh five, security detection system.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Do I have a second?
Do we have to also stipulate that it comes from the 2014 bond? Not necessarily you can, but you don't have to. I didn't have any to work with.
Do I have a second?
I second, Ms. Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Willbanks. I have a motion from Mr. Hibbs and a second from Mr. Willbanks. Please vote by show of hand. Mr. Hibbs?
John Hibbs, yes.
Erin Raich, yes. David Willbanks, I vote yes.
Sarah McMurrough, I vote yes.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes. The motion passes in the affirmative. We now move on to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters register to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. We will now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Fowler. In keeping with brief reports, I'd like to share some information about our district. First, I want to thank and congratulate, you may see her on the screen, she gets a lot of attention, Alice Monroe, our CTC teacher for being named the Dallas Cowboys Reliant Class Act Teacher of the Month. We're on hand as the Cowboys and Reliant Energy surprised her during a staff meeting with a jersey for her and a check for four thousand dollars for her school to use as, for supplies and materials and things that they need. Dallas Cowboy George Teague was there and, on hand to present this along with our mayor, Jim Ross, and this is always a nice recognition of our teachers because it gives them the opportunity to be recognized. So I want to thank Dallas Cowboys, Reliant Energy, and of course, Alice Monroe for her dedication to her students and to her school and to her community. Today marks the first day of Hispanic Heritage Month. It runs from September fifteenth throughout October fifteenth. Starting today and throughout the month, the district is going to spotlight different ways our campuses are honoring Hispanic heritage of their staff and students, and they're off to a great start today. You can see these stories throughout the month in our looped-in blog. What you see on the screen is that Wimbis World Language Academy, they had a mariachi band to welcome the students into school this morning, so congratulations to them. Also, we're excited that our NIST students will take a big step in the process of entering and going to college by taking college entrance exams. These tests are free and done during the school day, which eliminates two big barriers for our students. Seniors that take the ACT test, all seniors can take the ACT test, and every eighth grader and seventh grader in Avid takes a PSAT test. Sophomores as well take these exams, PSAT. This is how they qualify for national merit, et cetera, so these are outstanding opportunities for them to take these exams. How's that for hyping up exams for kids? Earlier this week, yeah, earlier this week, I was able to, they're so excited, I know, able to join several board members at our Center for Visual and Performing Arts at the annual Faith-Based Leaders Luncheon. The luncheon with our faith-based community and organizations was another great way to engage our community and have them engage with us and calibrate and ask questions and answers and have a good time together. This kicks off our stakeholder events. We have many of these throughout the year, and I'd like to thank Aaron Pedales, Parent and Community Engagement, for their putting on these luncheons and facilitating the invitations and everything that goes with it. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kavassos. If I could just add one thing about offering these free tests and offering them during the school day, it shows that AISD is once more removing barriers. We're making sure that all students have access, and I think that's very important for me to, to, to mention and for the community to realize the different things that we're doing for our students and trying to make sure we have equity across the district. Do I have any board members with reports? Ms. McMurrough?
Thank you, President Fowler. Tonight is Literacy Night at JB Little Elementary, also known as Camp Read-A-Lot, and it's just so wonderful that we are truly back to hosting family engagement events in person across the district, not just at one or twenty campuses, but across the district. And I really do appreciate each and every one of our family engagement representatives at the campus level. Shout out to Heather Bush, she's the one that's putting on JB Little's event tonight, as well as our Title I family engagement liaisons who work so hard to host these events and get, get families involved in their children's learning, under the direction of Mr. Eric Phillips of our PACE department, who also does a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. McMurrough. Mrs. Mays?
Thank you. Thank you, President Fowler. I just also would like to recognize that today does start National Hispanic Heritage Month, which is celebrated from September fifteenth through October fifteenth, and just recognizing the contributions of the influence of our Hispanic Americans, their culture, their achievement, and what I like to always add is their flavor. This celebration is based on ancestors of our Hispanic Americans that came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. September fifteenth is significant because it's the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile also celebrate their Independence Day on September sixteenth and September eighteenth, respectively. My quote that I would like to share is, "My parents taught me to never give up and to always believe that my future could be whatever I dreamt it to be." That was said by Susanna Martinez, who was the first Hispanic female ever elected to governor in the United States of America. So please go out and enjoy some activities to help celebrate our National Heritage Month for National Hispanic Day, and as you heard, there's plenty of activities right here in AISD.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Fowler. I wanted to just, we talk all the time about the opportunities that our kids get going to school here, and we were talking about CCMR earlier tonight, but we had a personal reaction with some of our students this week where we have a couple parakeets at home, and, and one of our parakeets is quite sick and had to go to the vet. And so one of the only places we could find in Arlington that would see our parakeet was the Arlington Animal Hospital on Division Street, and sure enough, when my wife took our parakeet, Coco, there were AISD students assisting the vet and taking care of our parakeet from the Dan Diopert Center. So all you want to be veterinarians out there, there is a program for you at the Career Tech Center, and look into it, it's one of the many programs we have there. And then the other thing I wanted to do is give a shout out to the PTAs at Duff, Bailey, and Arlington High School. Recently learned that each of those PTAs, their campuses earned a PTA School of Excellence Award. There are fewer than two hundred and fifty schools nationwide that get that distinction. So a big testament to the community engagement that we have at those campuses and a thank you to all the parents and community members who spend time there. As we all know, you know, parental involvement, community involvement makes a big difference, and they're doing it in a nationally recognized way at those campuses. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. And before I add anything, how is Coco?
She's a mess. Not due to anything our students did. Students were excellent. Melody's doing that.
I wasn't expecting that answer, Mr. Chapa.
Yeah, Coco, Coco might have had a stroke, so we're.
Oh. Well, we'll pray for Ms. Coco. I wanted to add that on Saturday morning, volunteers and many of our trustees will be going to project graduation, and that's where we go out into the community and visit students in our high schools who have, for whatever reason, not reported back to high school. And so we will go out and meet with them at their home and encourage them to return and see if there's any kind of barriers that we need to be aware of, that we could help with. So we'll be doing that Saturday morning, going out to the homes and reaching out to our, our high school students that encourage them to come back to school. All right, Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Yes, thank you, President Fowler. We have two items to consider. Mr. Willbanks requested from Dr. Lopez and staff to look at formally adopting the goal of being in the top quartile of our similar comparison districts and ensure that that, those goals are aligned with our House Bill III goals. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Also, a consideration or an ask for Dr. Lopez and staff to gather data to get a general percentage of districts that administered STAR last year, last spring, on a digital platform. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Secretary. It is now eight forty-three, and we are adjourned.